Dr. Bresny has now joined us. Uh, and so I am happy to introduce you to Dr. Bresny, who is the Grant County Health District. Uh, I don't know exactly what the title is. He's the official doctor for the health district. And he's the health officer, I think is the official title. So welcome, Dr. Bresny. And if you, uh, I'm not sure if you decided that you wanted me to share the slides or if you want to do the screen sharing. It is turned on for you to be able to do.
Uh, good evening and thank you for inviting me. And you are correct, I'm the health officer, which is the position. This is the, we would say, the chief public health official for the county. I am the health officer for both Grant and Adams counties. And I, um, have tried, I tried to share and I am unable to. Now I am able to. Now it's available to, uh, to me to share. So I will share the presentation. Uh, and again, thank you all and, uh, thank you for inviting me. Um, and hello to all board members and other guests. I don't know who all is on, but, um, please confirm that you're able to see the screen.
We are.
Yep. Very good. Well, um, I will just proceed and please tell me if it's getting too lengthy. I apologize, there will be some details, there will be some math, there will be some graphs. And I wanted you to have a full understanding where the, where, where this public health, both regionally, Region Seven, which is a division, um, that is a little bit, uh, remote, but includes Shillane, Douglas, Oaken Island, Grant and Kikittas counties. Uh, Region Seven, uh, existed in the past, uh, as a small subdivision of public health. For us, it's an opportunity to cooperate on the vital and important issues in our region. Um, I will, um, proceed with, uh, a review first for all of us to remind ourselves where we are with this pandemic in our country. I think you are all familiar with it. I'm sure you're reading, um, you're reading this on the, um, in the media and you are able to make your own judgment, I'm sure. But I did want to provide you with a local perspective. I have been a health officer in Grant County since 2001 and have responded to many outbreaks and, uh, many sort of many epidemics, including outbreaks of influenza, measles, mumps, chicken pox, Berthus's, open cough. And there's always, there are always similarities. And yet it is the experience that comes with time that teaches us about dynamics of epidemics in our communities and in our schools. And I will tell you that most often, schools are indeed part of these investigations. If you look at the COVID cases in the United States as of yesterday, you will see an interesting pattern here where the epidemic started, um, in the United States around the mid-March, uh, where the cases started to pick up, the so-called first wave. But that is sort of an anachronistic definition of, uh, an outbreak. We don't expect there to be waves. Instead, we think that as we tighten up our restrictions, uh, non-pharmacological interventions like, uh, physical distancing and masking, we will see the disease to decrease. And as we loosen up, we will see the disease increase. So it's not first, second, third wave, but just basically continuation of cases that respond quite readily to the community interventions and are very much reflection of this. The United States as a country is unique in its, uh, in its, uh, inability of control the initial surge of cases among the developed, developed world, as you know. Um, most of the developed world was able to curtail the first phase and at this point is not seeing the rates of disease that we are seeing, which came with formal and informal, with formal and informal reopening in May after, pretty much after Memorial Day. The United States has seen an increase of cases significantly since approximately mid-June, with peak at, uh, mid-July and slight decline, which has been occurring for the last two to three weeks. Still every year, about fifty-five to sixty thousand Americans are diagnosed with a positive COVID test, which is how we define these cases. They have to have a positive molecular test. So you see that the dynamic of the disease was a slight surge, um, even though it was quite significant at that time, control or mitigation of that, and then loosening of the mitigation efforts with subsequent, uh, near exponential growth initially. But then again, with a reintroduction of the, uh, non-pharmacological methods, meaning, uh, social distancing, hygiene, masking and so on, stabilization of the, of the outbreak in this country at quite high numbers. If you look at the deaths, uh, deaths kind of follow usually after the, the cases go up. But still in the United States, we see approximately one thousand COVID deaths every day. Uh, there has been an increase in deaths recently and some stabilization. Uh, at the beginning, there were more deaths because the outbreak was going on for some time. And because of lacking testing capacity in the United States, we didn't know we had an outbreak for some time. So we're starting to see deaths as opposed to seeing cases. This time we saw cases first, we've been watching more, testing more, and so the deaths were prevented better than the first time around. Now that is not the case, uh, with Grant County, and I will show you that in a moment. In the state of Washington, there's been a very similar curve to the one that you saw for the United States. There is this increase, stabilization at relatively high rates, and then significant increase in cases with subsequent stabilization by the end of July, mid-July, and gradual slight decline in cases over the last several weeks in the state of Washington. If you look at hospitalizations, how many people ended up in the hospital as a result of COVID? You see that the number was significant at the beginning because a lot of people were getting quite ill by the time we discovered there was an outbreak, uh, and the testing was not sufficient to detect it on time. Now we have better treatment, we have earlier diagnosis. We also had initially a lot of young people infected, so they are less likely to get hospitalized. But still we saw this gradual increase in hospitalizations, which has recently been stabilizing at again approximately forty to fifty hospitalizations a day of for COVID or suspected COVID. I want to talk to you very briefly about what is COVID activity? And COVID activity basically is a way by which we measure how bad is it really? And it determines risks for, risk for our communities and risk for our children. COVID activity can be measured in a variety of ways. And I know that you are quite familiar with some of them. For example, how many new cases did we have every day? Everybody seems to be interested in that one. Or what has been total cases since the outbreak started in our communities? But once you start getting a little bit more epidemiological about it or mathematical about it, you really want to know how many cases do we have per million or per hundred thousand so that we can compare ourselves to other communities? And Grant County is approximately one hundred thousand people. So if we get, uh, you know, in a given period of time, an X amount of cases, we can say that that's our rate per hundred thousand, because there is hundred thousand of us here. Now we could express that over the past three days. How many cases did we have in the last three days total? How many cases did we have last seven days? And I think it's not a difficult mathematics. If I said that on average per day during the last third, three days, we have hundred cases and over the last seven days, on average, we have eighty cases, you realize that there is a growth in cases, right? All of a sudden it's starting to tell you something. But the reason I'm talking about this, because the most useful, one of the more useful rates for us is a moving average of approximately of new cases expressed per one hundred thousand people per unit of time, because that allows us to look anywhere else in the world at the same rates, looking for communities like ours and see what happens in those communities when they have similar rates. Or we could say, over those fourteen days, the trend is going up or going down and is telling us about the disease activity. How is the risk in our community is therefore best expressed with one of these rates? And that is number of cases per one hundred thousand per fourteen days, which is what we've been using quite a bit. And this is one of the measures that I'll be talking a little bit more about today because it relates to risk at schools and risks for our communities from that rate. Why is that rate important and what have we observed so far in our county? Grant County, what have I seen? What are my colleagues experiencing in Shillane, Douglas and in our state? In Grant County, it is interesting that once you hit a rate around seventy-five, public health system, which is the health department in, in Grant County, that is the Grant County Health District, starts to be challenged with being able to trace all individuals who need to be isolated and quarantined because the numbers at that point are rising so significantly that typical response to us is that we are looking to hire more people to help us. We started to see it around seventy-five a couple of times at the beginning. And then again, with the second sort of phase of that outbreak, that second surge within which we still are. As that second surge was continuing, we started to observe that around hundred and fifty to two hundred, there is an increased demand on healthcare facilities. So your hospitals, your emergency rooms, your clinics are seeing an increase in patients who are demanding care or testing. And with that, we're seeing a rise in, in hospitalizations, generally not many, but few here and there. And we see an increase in sporadic outbreaks in the communities, especially in congregate setting. We saw this particularly, um, in the daycare setting, for example, or in a agricultural setting or even workplaces which are serving agricultural setting. Just remember the one fifty to two hundred is where it starts becoming really iffy. Once you hit two hundred to three hundred, daily hospitalizations are starting to occur. You basically start seeing that every day, there seems to be over a week, someone who needed to end up in hospital, meaning, because there are so many people now, two hundred to three hundred over the last fourteen days in Grant County, because we are hundred thousand, therefore the rate is two hundred to three hundred per hundred thousand every time we have two hundred or three hundred cases within the fourteen days. We are starting to see that the hospitals are filling their beds. Once you hit over three hundred, and that's an approximation. Again, we are, we are seeing that the dynamics changes here and there. But we are starting to see the ICUs are now struggling and we are starting to see more deaths. We are starting to see more community-wide penetration to all ages, meaning from children to elderly. We are starting to see all sectors from agricultural to businesses to healthcare, to, to daycares, to places like gatherings, which basically drive in our community, gatherings drive increase in rates everywhere. Be it an informal, unannounced, uh, baseball game that nobody tells us about where a hundred people go, or a wedding that occurred somewhere where fifty, a hundred people attended. I'm saying those are the places where disease will spread because COVID thrives on human interactions. It needs to multiply and for that, it needs to find human proximity. And that's where at three hundred, public health is overwhelmed. We are hiring more staff again. And I'll tell you, we've already hired, I think, six to eight individuals on top of an FTE. I think it was like twenty-three or so. So we are now at about twenty-five percent growth in staff just to respond to this. If the trend is going up, that rate I was telling you about, it means for us that the epidemic is not sufficiently mitigated. If the rate is rising and it's over three hundred, not only are you going to see healthcare inundated, public health inundated, outbreaks everywhere, you're also going to understand that you are actually for more trouble into the future because people who become infected today on Thursday will not seek testing most likely until next week. And the tests will not come back for forty-eight hours. And they will not get severely ill for at least seven to ten days. So we are always behind what the real numbers are going to look like. Therefore, it is imperative that once we are seeing increase in trend, we are responding with a most aggressive approach. And we really need our community to heed the advice because tracing, isolation and quarantine has been studied over and over, does not suffice in controlling the rate at, at, the rate at that high of a rate. On the other side of this, rates below twenty-five correlate very well in Grant County with managed and mitigating epidemic. When we were there, the staff actually was able to do other programs. We were able to respond, there are two reports here, three reports there, twenty-five over fourteen days. That is really easy to manage. It's obvious that at twenty-five, you are not going to see many hospitalizations, you're not going to see many deaths and you are basically in a, in a comfortable place. Well, you probably don't even need to have some, some of those measures like, you know, restaurants and, and masking and, and what in place. We know that from Europe. Once their rates drop below ten for per hundred thousand, fourteen, masking is not necessary because there is not enough people there who need to be masked to prevent their, um, uh, droplets from coming out and infecting others. Masks are not needed, there's just very few people. I spend a lot of time on the rate because I need you to understand what happens at each of these levels. I want you to see where Grant County is at this time as of yesterday, where Grant County compares with other counties in Washington State. In fact, North Central Washington, and specifically Region Seven, after Yakima, Benton, Franklin, uh, surge about a month ago, is the epicenter of the epidemic in our state at this time. Oaken Island, Douglas, Shillane, Adams and Grant are some of the highest rates you see in the state. At this time, that rate is four hundred and thirty. If you look back, I told you what happens over three hundred and that's precisely what's happening right now at that rate. Not only is that placing us at the top six in the state, but that rate is so high that staff, public health interventions will not succeed alone in bringing it down. In fact, the rate will take approximately six to eight weeks before it starts reliably declining in cases. If we instituted very rigid restrictions on contacts between units, now we are there, we are in phase two, which means only five people should gather. We know the reality is not bad, but we need our community to do it because it is not going to stop on its own. It's only going to stop if enough people are infected for ninety days so that the infection drops or until we have vaccine. There is nothing else that's going to stop it. The only thing is public health interventions, meaning isolation, quarantine, tracing and all the other things we ask our community to do. This is where we are, this is how we compare. This is from, um, yesterday and you see that there is an obvious, you know, difference in how many cases are reported to us every day. You see this on our website and you see that the rate is slightly inclining. It's not a significant incline when you look at just that. But please understand, twenty-seven cases per day means twenty-seven per hundred thousand per fourteen days already, without adding all the other thirteen days to, to that count. So that rate is obviously going to be much higher. And yes, indeed, the rate is presently at four hundred and thirty and rising. If you look back at July twenty-third, which is at the, at the X-axis at the bottom, you see the rate was two hundred and ninety-three. We were able to stabilize the outbreak at about three hundred and twenty until approximately beginning of August, at which point it took off again. And we keep struggling with this over and over. We get a little bit of a grip and again, we, we, we get this, we get this increase because the, there are so many cases in our communities that we are obviously not getting to everyone, not because we don't want to, but because we don't know about them. As you know, a lot of people don't have symptoms. Moreover, people who, uh, people who have disease and don't have symptoms don't get tested. Therefore, they never get counted. Testing is a rough estimate of the reality, meaning your positive test results that you're getting. Let's say I get twenty-seven cases or today we had sixty-two cases in Grant County alone. If I get sixty-two cases in one day, that means for me that within the last week, additional approximately three to four times that many individuals that I don't know about became infected. So the pool of individuals in the community is not sixty-two sick today. The pool of individuals who continue to be infectious is in the hundreds at this point. And those individuals may or may not know that they have disease. Therefore, they have to mask because that is the intervention, that is the treatment for this disease. It's masking, separating, staying at home when sick, and only then can we bend it. Because otherwise, I'll only depend on isolating and quarantining people linked to positive tests and that is not enough. So please, when you see this rate, it is a rough estimate of reality and it is a significant underestimate of how many individuals in our community are infectious at any given point of time. You can be infectious for up to fourteen days, even twenty days, but generally fourteen days, ten days, I think, is where we all agree is, is the minimum exclusion of, of an individual with the disease. So you could, if you don't know that you have it, you could be spreading this for ten, ten days at least and hopefully less than that. But if you are not symptomatic, that rate is generally lower. So I think we understand the rate and I would maybe pause here if there are any questions about the rate because I'm going to move on to something that will depend on the rate. And perhaps we can leave questions for the, for the, uh, for the, uh, for the end and, uh, that will be fine too.
Dr. Bresny, I, I believe that the request of the board, they'd like to wait till the end for the questions?
That sounds good. Very, very well. I will continue at, at fast speed because I do have a few more slides. You see that the DOH has a website, it's a dashboard where they will have a whole bunch of indicators. Please remember that that dashboard lags about five to seven days behind the reality. Our, our own numbers lag several days because we know that we don't have, you know, results immediately. And also additional seven to ten days because we know that people who are sick today will not get tested for some time, like I told you. We are basically, and I added in my own, um, uh, in my, in my own graphic, you know, where we actually are heading. We have this stabilization and a jump, as you see on that blue line, stabilization ended in July, increased stabilization again, mid-July, increase and so on. We keep basically going up. I refer to this as basically Yakimaization of our, of our, of our outbreak, meaning that we are seeing basically an uncontrolled spread, unchecked spread in spite of all of our effort, just like Yakima County experienced. Even though our rates are not yet reaching those heights, we are certainly converging onto those heights and are now seeing to the tune of sixty cases a day sometimes, which is just unheard of in our outbreak. So we are definitely at, you know, increasing in numbers, not decreasing, as the rates are suggesting. If you look at another metric, and there are some other metrics that we use, uh, you know, to see how we are doing, you notice that one metric that's been discussed very often is how many of the tests we do in the Grant County on a given day or on a, on a date that they are reported to us? How many of those tests we did are coming back positive? If your outbreak is growing, meaning more and more people are getting sick, you would expect that rate to go up. You would expect that rate, you know, if I tested ten people, you would expect about three or four of them to be positive. You know, in Grant County right now, it seems that about one in four to one in five tests are positive. Whereby just a month ago, you know, uh, three weeks ago, it was one in nine. Now we are at one in five. That's also because our test rates are actually dropping. You know, often there's been this dilemma for some reason that, you know, people are, there's more people sick and reported sick because, or reported with COVID because we are testing more. Well, the contrary is the case. We are actually testing rates and we are testing less and finding more cases with testing less. That means that we are actually very likely to find COVID in someone who comes in with symptoms right now than we were, say, ten or, uh, excuse me, one, uh, month or two ago. So please be also cognizant of that fact that not only is there increase in rate, but the positivity of those tests is now around twenty to twenty-five percent, which is a very significant number. It's exactly what Yakima County saw. And of course, you know that their death rates, you know, was over a hundred individuals who passed away in a county that's about two and a half size in terms of population and more densely populated than Grant County is. So those are other factors that, you know, it changed the dynamics of spread. But obviously, it's a very concerning finding. You know, if you came to me with sniffles, I have one in four chance that you have COVID without ever testing you. One in four, one in five. See something else that's different than the state and the country? In the state of Washington, in the United States, at the beginning, the first wave of hospitalizations was significant. It was big, it was a lot of people who died and a lot of people who were hospitalized. In Grant County, however, the first wave was very aggressively mitigated, I think. Also, our density helped and people were extremely good about what they were doing. I say extremely compared to what happened in June, July and in May. In other words, people were much better about distancing. Masking was not widespread, but people were sitting at home. We protected our elders better, uh, you know, as a result of that. But we hospitalized about twenty-three individuals in the first phase of the outbreak. However, since June, we, uh, since the end of May, we have now hospitalized more than seventy-five, or about three times as many individuals, which is the opposite. It's like you would flip that curve for the state of Washington and the United States. We are actually seeing more hospitalizations in Grant County, not less. And we are seeing more deaths, not less. As you see below, the arrow points, these hospitalizations were associated with three deaths uh, till the end of May. But now we've had additional and unfortunately, as of today, we've had total of fifteen. Today, I'm told we have fifteen individuals who are residents of Grant County and that number could be off by one or so, who are hospitalized at this time with COVID. And we know that that also affects the hospitals in our area. Just like I told you, if you have a rate over three hundred, things are just going unchecked. So you're going to have many more people in the hospitals. And my numbers as of today tell me that there are now thirty-one individuals, um, uh, with confirmed and five individuals with suspected COVID at this time for the region and, uh, in our regional hospitals with, uh, with our, when actually Central Washington Hospital being on diversion, meaning not accepting patients into ICU because they don't have enough staffing for that, for those numbers. Um, and then accepting again. So there have been this on and off. They're basically, they're basically running a very tight schedule there, not being able to accept patients. We know that our own Samaritan Hospital has at least six or so patients who are being currently treated. And there have now been cases of COVID in other hospitals, typically from healthcare workers spread. So please consider this trend that you see more hospitalizations that has yet not, that the curve is not stabilizing yet. As you see at the end on the top, there is a bit of an increase in hospitalizations recently. We had additional to hospitalizations today. Uh, so there is no stabilization of hospitalizations because there is no stabilization of the rate. And as you understand now, it's pretty predictable. If you are going to see more cases, you're subsequently going to see more hospitalizations and then you're going to see more deaths. That has been playing out everywhere in the world. And at some point, it goes so wrong that, that, that is virtually impossible to control. And that's what we are trying to prevent. We have not seen an exponential growth in Grant County of those hospitalizations. But why do we have more and we have, than we had at the beginning? And the rest of the country is seeing less. Something is off here, right? And you don't have to be an epidemiologist to figure that one out. I don't want to dwell on this. I wanted you to see the, the, the changes, what with, when, when communities reopen and relax, when more contact between humans is allowed, there is more consequences for the, the individuals who live in those communities, both in the hospitalizations and deaths. As a physician, I also see patients who had COVID who didn't die, but had a disease that leaves them with symptoms for a very long period of time. From sharp shooting pains to difficulties breathing to cough that's lingering, profound fatigue in a couple of teenagers, things like that. Or, you know, we are focusing on hospitalizations and deaths, but we are forgetting that there is disability that comes with COVID that is not accounted for yet in our statistics. So I wanted, wanted you to be aware of that other unspoken problem with COVID, which is long-term disability. And we really, we really don't know how long it takes for some individuals, including children, to recover from that. So COVID activity in Washington State is generally decreasing. The so-called reproductive number is around one or below in Eastern Washington. But there has been a recent North Central Washington surge over the last four to six weeks. In the state, there has been a slowed growth in hospitalizations and state mobility, meaning how much mobile people are and how much they're attached, talking to each other has been stable. That is responsible for dropping rate in our, dropping rate in the state. However, in Grant County, even without schools open, the epidemic is not sufficiently mitigated at this time. There is a concerning recent growth. We have these surges within a surge continually going up. We have increase in percentage of positive tests around twenty percent and near daily hospitalizations now of one to two individuals, which will eventually translate into deaths. And then we have elevated death rate, including thirteenth death, death rest yesterday reported in a forty-plus zero individual with a very tragic outcome, which, which, um, basically, you know, is, is, is sort of known fact that even though COVID affects predominantly elderly individuals, there will be a time where you will have a younger individuals affect very severely. And it's very tragic. Uh, if you look at the outbreaks we've been dealing with, you know, we have basically increased cases among healthcare workers. I think we now have more than a hundred and twenty cases that are related to healthcare environment. We've had outbreaks in hospitals. We've had outbreaks in long-term care facilities, as you well know. And that is a reflection, that's the cannery in the coal mine of the undercurrent of spread of mild or asymptomatic cases among young adults or children that go undetected because nobody really has to test for them. But we do see several weeks later what happens as a result of that. And together with spread among, you know, older and adult individuals who are in their, say, forties and fifties, who have been a significant part of that as well.
Dr. This is, uh, this is Elliot Goodrich, the board president. I'd like to, we've, we've been at this for thirty minutes here. Um, if we could try to move us to the slides really relevant to the schoolwork because we'd like to focus our time on a conversation at the end of your presentation. We've got, um, two other groups to present and other business items to still get to tonight, so.
Understood, all right, very well. So you understand the idea there. I wanted you to be aware of shifting dynamics of COVID epidemic in children. Prior to the summer, children were not a significant part of our discussion because there were not many cases. However, in the last four weeks, there has been a ninety percent increase in child cases in the last four weeks, to the tune of a total of three hundred eighty thousand children in this country, or nine point one percent of all COVID cases among children. Hospitalizations in children have increased about threefold when compared from, uh, to the beginning. The reason for that is schools were closed, children were not mobile, disease was not spreading among children. Summer came, uh, activities increased, now we have this significant surge. There are some statements that people have made recently when this was published just last week. There are some statements that people have made recently when this was published just last week. The idea is that the pediatric cases are occurring in the same states and regions that we know are surging with adults who have disease. So children are now mimicking, the increase in cases in children is mimicking the increase in adults. If you look at this slide, and this was presented to you from DOH, you will look on the right, there is in a red square, rate of the disease per hundred thousand population per fourteen days, reported from the countries that reopen school on a given date, which is on the left side. You notice that the highest rate that we have knowledge about was forty-nine point seven. Forty-nine point seven, about ten times less than ours. That was Denmark and Denmark experienced outbreaks when it first opened and it was very successful later because the disease was decreasing at the time of reopening. United States at this time is at two hundred and seventy-eight. Washington State is one thirty, Grand County is at four thirty. Look at the numbers and consider them for yourself to see how much can we learn from a place that has much lower, much lower case rate than we do. This is another comparison that's on your slides that shows you that cases per one million population in United States are about one seventy. In those countries, when they opened, the highest was thirty-five point five, which was again Denmark. You see that the rates are significantly lower and most of them are well below twenty-five or at twenty-five. So one more comparison for you, this is where our rate is going. And then below is the target rate where we want to be for phase two when we first were afforded to that opportunity and for in-person learning as per DOH recommendation. We are supposed to be below twenty-five cases per hundred thousand per fourteen days, for at least fourteen days before we consider in-person because of the experiences from the international community, from reopening there and the fact that cases have been occurring in spite of that rate. There is a couple of slides for you that you can review on your own when you consider this. But it is now very clear that children, when they are symptomatic with COVID, are able to shed the virus in similar quantities or greater quantities than adults. This was not known previously. JAMA says, the Journal of American Medical Association, that if you're younger than five, you have ten to one hundred times more virus in the nose. But if you're older than that, your rate, the amount of virus in your nose is not gonna be lower. We know of cases and many reports now of children transmitting disease to households, transmitting to their contacts at similar proportions as adults. Children do not transmit disease less unless they are asymptomatic, which is the next slide, next point. If children have no symptoms, they are less likely to transmit the disease. So that's good news. However, community transmission is imported into schools. Children are not immune from COVID, they will bring it to schools if the rate in the community are high. It is impossible to disentangle schools and outbreaks at schools from the current community outbreaks and the risk in the community. That is very obvious to us now. There are two slides of cases, case studies that you are able to review from Korea, Israel, from the state of Georgia and from Washington DC on the rates of COVID and children's capacity to infect adults in the same quantity as the adults are infecting each other. So if you have children with disease, they will infect household members, they will infect each other at school, they will infect teachers. This is a review of the dynamics. One more time, early on, we closed schools, less cases in kids, playgrounds were closed, lockdowns were imposed. We didn't see many kids with COVID. After June and during summer, children out and about, just like adults, significant rise in COVID among children. And more studies are pointing to the fact that children get, shed, carry and transmit summers as well as adults, even though older children resemble adults much more than the younger children. Children can cause outbreaks and can infect each other at school and at home. There are no reports in the literature in summary on countries opening above fifty. We don't have reports, we don't know what happens, but we have an idea what will happen. I will show you, this is a slide really quickly showing you this from August eleventh, I pulled it up a couple of days ago. Already are there anecdotal reports of outbreaks occurring of individuals, including teachers, parents being infected from places like Indiana, Florida, Georgia, places that have not controlled the disease always and have reopened schools. And therefore, my recommendation to the community at this time cannot be to reopen schools for in-person classroom instruction. It is not appropriate, it is against the evidence and it would be, it goes without saying that the community will see further difficulties with controlling the outbreak if not with more poor outcomes. This is based on the evidence I've presented to you, not my personal opinion. Notice that at this point, we are at seventy-five over one hundred as a rate that we do not support and there is no real wiggle room on that. Twenty-five to seventy-five, I would support an approach for K to five. And less than twenty-five, I would support in-person classroom instruction with continued COVID precautions. There is a petition process to request exceptions for very narrow and limited number of individual students. I don't mean whole classrooms, I don't mean large numbers of students who cannot learn at home, detailed safety plan, how many are gonna be there, how are you gonna make sure that they are not gonna transmit it at any of those rates, meaning over seventy-five? This needs to be signed by the board, superintendents, and I would strongly recommend consent from parents and teachers who are going to be providing education and agreeing to having their children at school with rates as high as four hundred plus. As you know, staff may work from school and I agree with that, staff is able to work from school. This is the slide that were presented to you from DOH. If we ever get to a point, and I think we will, for in-person education when local epidemic is mitigated, it really takes relatively stringent rules still in place for us to be able to continue that education. Shields are not a replacement for masks, for example. Masks need to be used at greater than ninety-five percent at schools to really show the effectiveness. Masking is the treatment for this disease. Therefore, there is really very little wiggle room for us to allow alternatives other than for a very specific, narrow case-by-case basis on anatomic deformity diagnosis or other conditions. Health officers should be the one approving these exceptions. There needs to be ongoing screening sanitation and of course, you know what would happen if there were cases in cohorts of students. If you do divide learning, once in-person education is taking place, you should divide it into cohorts of students who do not intermingle. If two cohorts become infected, the school, if two cohorts express outbreaks, the school needs to shut down. There is a list of cancellations, activities that should not be occurring during global pandemic when in-person education is taking place. I have a slide here to show you that even one symptom at the time when student presents to school is enough to exclude that student from participation. Therefore, it's extremely important that a robust screening program is in place. In other words, as you are listening to this, I'm sure you understand there is a lot of burden on schools when there is in-person education to assure that all these things are in place or else again, we are gonna start seeing a recurrence of disease. Schools cannot be disentangled from the communities they serve. That means that if we have uncontrolled, unmitigated outbreaks, it is entirely inappropriate and cannot be supported. And I will not endorse any reopening for in-person learning and education at this time until we reach the rates that have been recommended by the Department of Health, by our Region Seven and by my recommendation to the communities and the letter that I provided to you yesterday. However, there is a hope because we know that any region experiencing high rates should do everything possible to lower it. Meaning you all have the power to talk to the community and you are the leaders in our communities and help us out. Because if we did indeed do the things that we ask our community to do, within nine to eleven weeks, our death rates will be lowered by ninety percent. Under two months, our cases will be lowered visibly. We could be reopening in October if we started to do it all today. Phase two recommendations, not phase four, which is the case in many places. This is the statement from today and I will be ending there. This is a statement from Robert Redfield. Dr. Redfield is the director for Centers for Disease Control and a virologist himself. I'm gonna read this because I think it's important. He talked about schools today, he issued this statement, we are going to need to do it safely. We are going to need to do it sensibly and we are going to have to do it based on the unique circumstances, the kinetics of the epidemic in the areas that the schools are beginning to try to wrestle with this reopening. And quoting from today, it was timely, I included it, it is not in your handouts. I have a couple of other things and one of them is public health is truly in the eye of the storm. We don't profess, we know it all, there is a lot of unknown with this. But what we are seeing and what we learned from outbreaks in the past and what we are learning about children and researching dynamics of COVID among children, we are considering what is known, we are very deliberate about this. We are trying to make sense out of it both morally and scientifically. And it is gut-wrenching to say to you that schools cannot open. We continue to appeal to community members to shape their own destiny because community has shaped the destiny for our school reopening. If the community can come around with distancing, masking, staying home, washing hands, isolating when sick and quarantining, we can control this and we can reopen schools, but the time is not now. I am here to make it safer and healthier and if I told you that you could reopen the schools for in-person education, it would be neither safe nor would it make us healthier. And I'm open to questions. I apologize for being longer, I did want you to get the details and understand that this is a decision that has been reached after much thinking and is based in as best of a science as we have, plus considering what the community wants and what is morally and ethically appropriate at this time with school reopening. I welcome your questions and thank you again for inviting me.